The use of electronic message centers and reader boards in the CN Neighborhood Commercial District. Proposed amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission, are recommended by the Planning Department, and the Planning Department has received no calls or comments since first reading.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve on second reading?
No approval.
We have our motion and a second. Discussion by the council. Any comments from the audience? Seen no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Item four, consider on second and final reading. Ordinance 090-816, rezoning 1200 Miracle Road and adjacent vacant lot, tax map number 66. Plots 7305 and 7306 from RS 15 Single Family Residential to CG General Commercial. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, councilmembers, this ordinance rezones two parcels owned by the River Community Church located off Miracle Road and was requested to allow for the future expansion of the church. Proposed rezoning has been approved by the Planning Commission, is recommended by the Planning Department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No move.
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Item five, consider on second and final reading. Ordinance 090-817, annexation of Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue area. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, this ordinance would annex and establish the zoning for certain properties consisting of approximately 90 acres located north of the current corporate limits between Free Hill Road and North Washington Avenue. A plan of services for the proposed annexation area was adopted at the last meeting of the council. The proposed annexation with the establishment of CL Local Commercial and RS 20 Single Family Residential zoning have been approved by the Planning Commission and are recommended by the Planning Department. The Planning Department has received one call in opposition to the annexation since first reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No move. Approve on second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Go ahead, just please identify yourself.
My name's Debbie Hannah. I think one of the reasons that you may not have gotten any comments is the newspaper, after the last meeting, basically said it was a done deal. It said you all approved the annexation, and that's it. You didn't read till the very last line of the article, you didn't know that there was another opportunity to change anything. One of the things that the Planning Commission did is that it was not a unanimous vote from the Planning Commission. It was barely approved by them. Okay? And one of the members of the Planning Commission wasn't even there. Second, you say the Planning Commission, Mr. Mills says it's filling in a gap? No. It's not. And that... The police are driving, one side is in the city and one side of the road is out of the city. Unless Cookeville takes in the whole world, that is always going to be the case. I mean, city limits is a limit. You're always going to have one side out and one side in. You know, just a mathematical note there. What concerns me, of course, is the people in the mobile home. Ms. Mills says, yeah, they can get a hardship approval. I think that's been done once by the city council ever. Okay? So that's not a real likely thing. So those people are basically going to be homeless anything ever happens to their home. The budget. I keep hearing that it's tight and there's not a lot of room and stuff, and here the Planning Commission wants to spend more money to bring in land for the city. And part of it probably should be brought in, but part of it should not, and there's no reason to bring it in. It doesn't make sense to. And for a two-year study to figure that out, either they're sitting goofing off or something, because it shouldn't have taken two years to figure this out. If I were to do my work, take two years to do my work like that, I'd be fired. These people that have asked for it are wanting it because of sewer. They want the sewer line. If they're pushing to get the sewer line, how does that affect the people that have already been annexed on the far east of town, over by Shagriff Grove? They don't have sewer yet, and they've been annexed for a long time. Okay? How come they haven't got sewer yet? It's not in the budget. You don't have the money.
Right.
And so you're going to spend more money to get more land, to make more commitments for more sewers that you don't have the money for.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. We're going to limit our comments to three minutes.
I do have one more quick thing.
If you can just make it brief.
I did have.
We'll...
Now it's done for God. So I guess that was the important ones.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Do we have any other comments from the audience? If you just identify yourself.
I'm David Erdry. I'm on 236 Shoak Cemetery Road, which is part of it. I've got a... I didn't realize it was coming up so fast and didn't have time to deal with it. I was working on a petition, which is to add to the other petition we have, so I think I've got two or three extra names to go with a petition that we filed with the Planning And the same article that she mentioned earlier said that the homeowners wanted in. Is anybody else in here from that area that wants to be took in? Well, I don't know who these people are. If they want in, wouldn't they be here at this meeting? And I've talked to about everybody out there, and I have yet to find anybody to say, yes, I want in the city. I don't know if y'all want this petition to go with the other one. I mean, I don't want in your city. I don't. I've got two pieces of property in the city now, which, I mean, I bought them because they were in the city and I wanted in the city with those. I live outside the city. I don't want in the city. So anyway, I'd say if y'all want this petition...
Just bring that up or hand it to Kathy there on the end. Thank you.
That's about all I've got to say about it.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience?
I have just one or two quick comments. Ellen Hannah, we own one of the farms out there. And, you know, we're a farming community out that way. It does not mesh well with being a city. It's additional regulation for absolutely no reason but to help a couple developers who want to build apartments. And I think it's a travesty of justice to have every single one of those people out there that own the land that's being annexed right now being brought into city just so a couple people can make a few extra bucks. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Do we have any other comments from the audience? Yes.
My name is Mary Myers. I live at 236 Shoak Cemetery Road, and I have never seen anybody come to this meeting for this. We've been to every meeting from the Planning Commission all the way through because we don't want it.
All right. Thank you. Any other additional comments from the audience?
Give her a question. Go ahead. All right. Go ahead.
Last meeting, and Mr. Mills mentioned that Mr. Shoak was one of the ones requesting the zoning. It was the Shoak property that was sold to create the biofuel plant that's polluting my creek now and why my cousin's in the lawsuit with them because now we can't rent cattle on our farm because of the pollution until I dig a new pot. So zoning, that's... It's good enough for him to sell his thing and get that through and then get the zoning, then Harley Street Fair.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments from the council?
Only thing I could add is, you know, I think that there definitely is value in being a resident of the city. We have fantastic services that we provide and sewer and water and our gas, electric. You know, we have good departments and good services, and I just feel like at this time this is something that in probably the most unusual economic situation that our country's faced in the last 60 years that, you know, most businesses are not growing right now. They're hunkering down and getting through this period. To me, this just seems like something that we might could wait on. I don't see any drastic need, and again, would encourage you to reconsider your vote.
I would echo those comments. And again, the only thing, of course, the map's not up here, but I really didn't understand if, you know, if we were going to consider this, why not consider more and take in that whole farm and, you know, if we're going to do it. Really didn't make sense, so...
If you...
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I mean, we have it up here on this. I just meant, unfortunately, y'all don't have it up there to see, but we have it on our screens here. But, you know, taking that whole part as opposed. But again, you know, it is a concern about the commitment that we're making for the services down the road. But we say this is a majority council, and we rule by majority, so everyone can vote their conscience and do what they think's in the best interest.
Well, and I appreciate Mayor and Council Shelton's comments. I think one of the things that was made, comment was made too, that we've studied this for two years. I think what the comment needs to be taken away from that is the Planning Commission, we look at the city and where its future growth is going to be. It takes a long time to do that. We took a year and a half to decide on a sign ordinance that we voted on just two items ago. I think when I look at this, you know, there are a lot of citizens that border this property who depend upon us to regulate and to zone property and control the things that are going on the properties around them. And so for me, I look at not just the area that we're annexing today, but I'm also looking at the area that borders it. Those people expect, because they're in the city of Cookeville, that they're going to get the protection that they need, not only from our police and fire and water and sewer services, but also from a zoning standpoint. So I think there's a very good benefit to doing that. And obviously, it's been recommended by planning staff. It's been through Public Works, Fire, Police Department, and they're recommending that we can do it and that our Finance Department has recommended that. So I think it doesn't behoove us to wait on it, and I appreciate the work that Planning Department's done and all the applicable departments, and I think the time is right for it.
I would echo Councilman Williams' remarks. I feel like that, I think it's a good thing that we have gone about it slowly and to see that we're doing the right thing or feel like that we're doing the right thing at this time. The zoning is very important to me, and I feel like we need to... And if we're going to progress in our city to grow, we're going to have to make some of these very hard decisions. So certainly feel like that these individuals shouldn't be hampered so much in what they're doing now and certainly will be protected in the future, and the value of their property would be increased in the future. So I feel like that, in all good conscience, I feel like I should vote for this annexation.
Any further comments by the council? Seen no further comments, all vote.
Three yes votes. Votes, two no. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item six, hold a public hearing and consider on second and final reading. Ordinance 090-918, amending the budgets for the various funds, departments of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ending 6/30/09. Sponsor, Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councilmembers, this ordinance does amend the budgets of five of the city's funds. There have been no changes to any of the numbers, any of the amendments since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve on second reading?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. New business, item seven, consider resolution 090-914, establishing mandatory retirement for all police officers and firefighters who have attained the age of 62 years of age. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
I'm trying to get to the right slide here. I got it messed up. This resolution is presented to TCA Section 8-36205, and that authorizes the city to require mandatory retirement for police officers and firefighters, and it's only for police officers and firefighters. It's not for any other city employees. And I need to stress that I think there's some confusion on the part of some of the employees. This is not the bridge bill. The bridge bill allows public safety personnel to retire at age 55, but that also, if the city were to adopt that, then the city has to agree to bridge their social security till age 62, which is a $300,000 to $400,000 a year expense that the city's just not in a position to handle at this point. But both the bridge bill and this resolution, this part of the state law, both require you to retire at age 62. So if you support the bridge bill, then you would support this bill too, because both of them say at 62 you must retire. And that's it in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. I would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have discussion by the council?
I received just one call regarding this, and when, I think what the call was concerning was that it said that it would take effect immediately, and the person who was calling me thought that that meant that we'd be throwing people out like tomorrow. And when I explained that both the fire chief and the chief of police had gone through and shown us how many people it does affect immediately, you know, that we're not throwing anybody out, you know?
No, this requires them to retire at the first day of the month following their 62nd birthday.
Right.
So it goes into effect immediately, but it does not mean that it affects the employee immediately.
Exactly. Exactly. And once, I suppose, with the person, you know, it was quite understandable and so...
Okay. Do we have any other comments by the council?
Were these, I think we talked a little bit about in work session about some minor issues and major issues. Were these pretty well worked out with the HR and so forth? Is that coming along pretty well with working out some of these like month or two? You know, they're short, a couple months or whatever. Is that satisfactory to these employees? Do they understand about the...
I don't know that any of those issues have been worked out with those employees. Hopefully, if you've been here that long, you've got enough annual leave and sick leave that will take care of a couple of months.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was...
But, no, I mean, there's not really any way to remedy that because if you adopt this, this requires them to retire at age 62 regardless of...
Well, but the employee understands they can use the...
Well, for those that have a few years until they reach that age, they can make sure, you know, they can start making provisions for when that happens and try to make sure they have enough sick leave to do it. I mean, most of us that have been here since day one...
Alt.7.
Have a lot of sick leave built up. I mean, it's...
Yeah. I understand.
So...
Okay. Any other comments? Comments from the department heads? Seen no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item eight, consider resolution 090-915, providing for the pass-through of a TVA wholesale rate increase. Sponsor, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, at its August meeting, the TVA board approved their 2010 budget, which also included an 8% wholesale base rate increase. And the reason that they gave for that rate increase, you may have read, but they're experiencing unprecedented decline in sales revenue. Their kilowatt hour sales are off tremendously. They needed to increase the funding of their retirement pension plan, investments to maintain power plants and other system assets, and projects related, as you can imagine, to the Kingston recovery effort, the North Carolina Clean Air lawsuit, and finding a way to dispose of the coal combustion byproducts that they had the problem with at Kingston. Initially, at least in October, the 8% increase is going to be offset by an 11% decrease due to fuel cost adjustment. So our customers, the net for our customers in October is going to be a 3% decrease. Our average residential user, I did a calculation, it turns out for that average user about a $2 decrease in their electric bill for October. And the reason for that 11% FCA decrease is about a year and a half ago, they implemented the fuel cost adjustment to try to track more closely the fuel costs going up and those kind of things, and they overcharged in doing that. And there's about $612 million that they're going to have to give back. And October, they're going to eat up about 20% of that. So the following months will be a little bit less, but it will, you know, it'll, they'll basically use that to offset the effect of what the true fuel cost adjustment is. The reason for this resolution, basically, as you know, when TVA raises our rates, we basically have to pass that through to our customers to be able to maintain our revenue level. So with all that being said, I'd recommend your approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do we have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you for speaking. Item nine, consider approval of the 2009 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Sponsor, Ms. Gail Fowler.
Mayor and council, I'd like to present for your consideration this evening the contract for the wellness screening for City of Cookeville employees. The contracted services are provided by Cookeville Regional Medical Center. The contract provides for the various screenings, I believe you may have in front of you on your screen, but since we don't have the other, I'll go through those quickly. Height and weight, your pulse, blood pressure, body mass index, complete chemistry profile, a lipid profile, TB skin test, the PSA for prostate issues for males age 40 and over, the regular flu vaccine, and digital mammograms for females. Additional services that are being offered at this event, at the employees or spouses' own expense are the thyroid panel, vitamin D level, blood type and RH factor, hemoglobin A1C, which is for diagnosed diabetics, complete blood count, bone density screenings, and vascular screenings. We find this program is very popular with our employees and their spouses, and we know from past history that employees have discovered health issues that prompted them to seek medical treatment that may have prevented more serious problems from occurring. So we think it does work from that aspect. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have, but I would respectfully request your approval of the contract.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move for approval.
We have our motion and a second. Discussion by the council.
I think we'd just like to strongly encourage all of our employees to participate, their wives or husbands, in this program. It's a great way for people to check things early and get a diagnosis of where they are and their health on an annual basis. I know being able to look back and where you are year from year when you do this on a repetitive basis, it's a way for us to know and catch things early on. So we'd just like to encourage all of you to do that and participate for your own health and safety and for the people that you're employed with as well.
Did you get those dates worked out?
We did check on that, Councilman Shelton. If we had to change it, it would throw us out into November. We were concerned about flu vaccine being that late coming on. I did poll the departments and found that there were just 10 or 12 employees that were scheduled to be off that week. So we feel like we can accommodate everyone with that makeup day.
With the one makeup day?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we need to make appointment for that, for either one of those dates?
Yes, and I'll have the forms available to all the employees and to each of you tomorrow.
And I want to go on record too about wellness screening is so important, and oftentimes in our busy lives, we forget that just because we're feeling good doesn't mean we're healthy. And certainly, in our family, my son was, had a wellness screening, and it was thanks to the city of Cookeville when they were weighing and taking blood pressure for children in 2004, that he was discovered to have had a disease that is being managed. And if that hadn't occurred when it did, no telling what would have happened. And he had a normal physical in August and had the BMI in October, and it caught it. And so I really urge all of the employees to take advantage of this, and they always have nice snacks too, so...
We try.
There you go.
All right. Very good. This is a good program. Any other comments from the council? Comments from the audience? Seen none, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you very much.
Item 10, consider approval of change order on contract for sprinkler systems. Sponsor, Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, what I have to report tonight is a change order for the sprinkler system coverage in this building, extending that into the planning and codes area where the fire plans examiner and the fire inspector are. This change order is for $6,325.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion by the council. Comments from the audience?
I'm sorry, one quick question. Okay, so the change order, the addition, is still within the original amount that was done, right?
Correct. We originally had $122,000, and this puts us about $120,000 to do the extended coverage. So we're still within our...
So it would be the entire hallway downstairs where planning and...
Correct. It would be all the planning and codes area.
That's good. That's good. So everything back, fire department goes all the way back to leisure services, would that be covered?
Everything all the way back to leisure services will be covered. That area and the computer area, still not.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Any other comments for the council? Seen no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief. Item 11, consider authorizing the electric department director to execute a license agreement with Upper Cumberland Electric, providing for the access and use of fortunes of aneasement owned by Upper Cumberland. Sponsor, Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, first of all, this is a standard bowler plate type license agreement that TVA uses. That's where Upper Cumberland got this. Mr. Rader and I have looked this over a couple of times over the last few months. We feel comfortable with it at present, and this will allow us to utilize the facilities that we purchased, some of the facilities we purchased, and let us continue marching on with our annexation efforts. Be happy to try to answer any questions you've got, or at least turn those over to Mr. Rader, and with that, recommend your approval.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council. Seen no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Peak.
Thank you.
Item 12, consider awarding the following bids. Item 12A, uniforms, emergency equipment, motorcycle camera units, police department. Sponsor, Chief Bob Terry.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised for bids for uniforms, and two little bidders coming in making specifications was DJs and gals uniforms. I'd recommend your approval.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion by the council. Seen no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes. Motion carries.
All right.
The second item we have is the emergency response equipment. We also advertise and receive bids for those as well, and we're recommending truckers' lighthouse and law enforcement supply.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No move.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council.
Is this to replace, or is this for new the...
Well, actually, we're getting, I'm going to be bringing to you at the next council meeting, a bid recently opened for a police car... meeting, a bid we recently opened for a police car that we're buying on a grant. And part of that grant money will be used to buy equipment for that. And if in the future, were we to wind up with the money that we seized, I'm sure that we'd probably have to use part of that to replace some cars with. So, it's a good time, just go ahead and bid it all, just in case.
Okay. So, this is, we're buying one?
Well, you're buying.
This is, we're approving the contract, you can buy off this contract?
Buy off of this, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Very good. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And lastly, Mayor and council, what we have is a grant that's been awarded to the Cookeville Police Department by the Governor's Highway Safety Program, which will fund and buy two cameras for motorcycles. And the total price of that will be $9,250. That's a sole source, Digital Alliance, the camera company we use, and that's where the quote is from. And we'd recommend your approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion in second?
Second.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
How many years, did we lease those motorcycles? We did, didn't we?
We're coming, on the end of the second year.
Yeah, that's what, okay, I was trying to...
And I think we leased them for two years at a time, and we're currently discussing with Mr. Davidson, Mr. Shipley, is what course of action, what to recommend to the council for the upcoming lease.
Right, so, that's where I was getting at. I mean, if we don't renew the lease, we, I guess we can...
The price we got quoted was, should we renew a lease and get two new motorcycles, it would cost $500 per motorcycle to transfer the equipment from one to the other. So, if you renew a lease and we wind up two new motorcycles, then we just move all the exit, the equipment belongs to us, the motorcycle belongs to them.
Right. I just didn't know whether it would make sense to not install this equipment until we make a decision as to...
Oh, no, I mean, this, yeah, well, I don't know. Probably, right now, we just need to get the paperwork done where we can actually buy the stuff, and then we'll wait to see what we're going to do with the other. And I don't know, there's, there's a possibility we may be able to pick one motorcycle up on a grant, but that's still, yet, waiting to see.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12B, HDPE pipe, Public Works Department. Sponsor Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised and received bids for HDPE pipe. I would recommend Southern Pipe and Supplies, the low bidder meeting specs.
All right. Do we have a motion second to approve?
I'm moved. Second.
We've got the motion and the second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. At this time, we have our hearing of citizens and our delegations. And while we wait for the people to come to the lectern, we can open up the floor to the council. Any comments from the council? I'd just like to say, commend everyone who had a hand in putting together the Cityscapes Fall Fun Fest event. It seemed like it was very good. I hope that we had success with that event. We had beautiful weather, and we're hoping for that same weather for the Upper Cumberland Regional Air Show, which is happening this Saturday at the Sparta White County, Cookeville, Putnam County Airport, just south of Cookeville on 111. We're expecting probably anywhere from 15 to 20. I don't know if Gail Fowler's had a big hand in this, if she wants to speak to the air show, but we are really hoping for sunshine. So, please, everyone, keep that in their good thoughts.
Finish your 15 to 20,000.
15 to 20,000 people expected at this event. It's a very, very big show. I did speak with Bill Walker, Bill Walker of Regions Air, Region Air. He said that it was a go event, rain or shine, so come on out. Any other comments from the council, announcements? One more time, any comments from...
Seriously. I'm back at school, remember?
All right. Seeing no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.